Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Green livestream. I'm your host, Edie Yarnrell, and I'm here with Mr. Scott Free.
Hey, everybody. Doing good, doing good. Thanks, everybody, for joining us.
And we're welcoming back Ms. Vali Elza, all the way from San Francisco, because we are coast-to-coast kind of people over here.
National Green Party.
Creating our own networks, right? So how are you doing today?
Yeah, first off, I just want to say thank you so much again for hosting me again, Edie and Scott. I really appreciate it. And I'm really, really like so envious of the quality of your independent green media over in Illinois. Like, I really wish we had something like it in California. And I think more state Green Parties need to be like following your example.
That would make me extraordinarily happy. Because we need to like, just push those airwaves, right?
Yeah, I mean, and I think it's, you know, in the 21st century, like, everybody, I think more people, what is it? A lot of research has shown that more people get their information from independent news more than ever. So like, this is the time, and we should try to take advantage of, you know, before the internet gets totally censored.
Yeah, it's only half-censored now.
Well, yeah, I just, I just saw that YouTube just disappeared about thousands of Israel videos. So, yeah, I just saw that today. So, yes, right? The total censorship is coming. That is true.
Yeah, but, yeah, in terms of how I'm doing, I mean, in San Francisco, things are interesting. They're quiet. I don't know if you all saw, but it was interesting because Trump, at one point, I think a week ago, was deploying National Guard troops. But then our mayor, Daniel Lurie, who is the heir to the Levi Strauss fortune, so you know, billionaire baby, or millionaire, either way, extremely wealthy, was able to call Trump. And he also had a couple of other billionaires on the call, like, I think, the Salesforce CEO and another CEO, and essentially, they were all able to talk him down and say, "Look, we're already handling crime the way you want it. You know, we're getting the homeless out the streets, dah, 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 dah." You know, you really don't have to do that. And they were able to talk him down supposedly and send the National Guard packing. But just because the National Guard troops aren't in here doesn't mean the ICE hasn't already been deployed. Raids all over the Bay Area. And there's also things coming out, like, for example, they were at one point in Alameda, which is across the bay from us. So you have to cross the Bay Bridge to get into Alameda County, which contains Oakland and Berkeley. And there is a rapid response of people, I think, the night that they were supposed to show up, of 10,000 people that actually showed up protesting National Guard. And personally, I think, I'm not super familiar in the timeline, but I think it was not just the call made, but also the show of force and the fact that people were willing to organize and show up just like that. So it's nice to know that people are willing to show up. And, yeah, I've been really impressed by seeing everything happening in Chicago and the grassroots resistance to ICE there. It's it's crazy, and in a really, really good way. So it's nice to know that we could have something similar in the Bay Area.
We are, you know, I'm very close to Rogers Park, and that's probably the most neighborhood of all Chicago. And they're doing a great job. They're doing a great job. I mean, they are out there with whistles and harassing. And, of course, you know, every day, it's a nightmare story. Just today or yesterday, ICE went into a daycare center with the kids there and pulled teachers out. And we're going through the rooms looking for teachers. They just, it's a private space. They they didn't have a warrant. So, I mean, just terrorizing the kids. It's every day, it's a nightmare story, every single day. Multiple nightmare stories in Chicago. It's really bad here. Really bad.
Yeah. And I can't help but feel that Chicago is being targeted specifically because of the high black population, the history of radicalism and resistance, right? So, but it also makes us as to why Chicago is fighting back in such a really wonderful way. So it's interesting watching that play out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm doing my share. I'm sorry, y'all. I forgot to do my share. So, but, but we also found out today, from watching the activists in Chicago, that Pritzker, one of his hotels that he owns, is, has ICE staying there.
Yeah.
So he's profiting from people he says he's against. So that makes me think he's not really against anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think part of this really disingenuous trend that's cropping up among a lot of Democrats, which is being able to say the right things, say the populist things that are really tapping into, I think, what a lot of people are feeling. But then the things they do are entirely orthogonal to the things that they claim they believe in. So it's really dangerous, really, really dangerous.
Yeah, they know the right buzzwords to say, but they don't have that history behind them. And, and I was watching Breonna Joy Gray on, oh, who was interviewing her? I just watched her this morning, I think.
Oh, was it with Shama Swann or Nathan Robinson?
No, neither one of those. She must be making the rounds, talking about Zorons when.
Oh, it was Mark Lamont Hill, wasn't it?
Oh, there you go. Right, right, right.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, she was saying similar things, like, so you got to ask the follow-up questions. You have to dig a little deeper, you know, instead of just accepting the buzzword.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think Pritzker, you know, Pritzker has been playing that game. Brandon Johnson has also been playing that game, calling for a general strike, which was interesting.
It was cool, but, yeah, no follow-up work. Well, we're, we're, we need to get now.
Okay, when?
Yeah. It was a good statement from a Democrat, but, yeah.
Yeah, very, very interesting.
We will pay everyone salaries. Let's just all go on strike.
And as we observe here, you know, the, the state police are on the side of ICE. They're not on the side of the protesters. And the state police certainly could, you know, Pritzker has the power to have the state police be on our side, protecting us. No, not the case. Not the case.
It's difficult for me to imagine any scenario where police would be willing to stand against US military, you know?
I know. It's, yeah, right, right. And, you know, totally off-subject in a way, but all of these, like, you know, revolutions that happened in these other countries, it is the military going to the side of the people. Now, whatever machinations there are to get them there, it happens, whether it's a CIA push because they want it to overthrow, or whatever. But it, and, right, it's so hard to imagine that the police would come to our side in a moral way. It just doesn't seem like it's, I don't know.
Yeah. Sorry, I know you folks asked about San Francisco, and I think I started talking about Chicago. It's hard not to. But in terms of other things that are happening, other, like, big things, something that was really interesting. So I live in Mission Bay, which is right next to the Mission Neighborhood. And the Mission Neighborhood is famous for having, like, the bulk of Latinos that live in that neighborhood. So, of course, everything that's been happening has been really scary for those residents. A lot of bilingual, bilingual Spanish speakers, some of the best burritos you'll ever find, the Chipotle burrito, the huge thing is actually based on the Mission burrito. So that's where that came from.
Interesting.
Oh, yeah. So if you're ever around, come to the Mission Neighborhood. But it also has a bad rap among tourists, because that is right now where a lot of unhoused people are sort of being, you know, shoved to. And it's always been this very political thing in San Francisco, it being an expensive city for a very long time, the supervisors, which is what we call our city councilors, I don't know why, we have a board of supervisors, we're very special. But our supervisors will sort of retaliate against each other and, like, shove the unhoused people from district to district to kind of give, you know, like, a neighborhood a bad name. So, right now, that's kind of what's happening in the Mission. Also, Mission, the Mission has a high concentration of nonprofits. So I think a lot of unhoused people are, like, you know, actually seeking services as well.
So literal pawns in their political game.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
That's gross. I'm sorry.
It's absolutely disgusting. But, yeah, just to, like, paint a little portrait of the Mission and what it's like. So it's like, it's super lively. There's so much culture, but it's not the most tourist-friendly. It's not the cleanest place. I love it, though. I love spending time in the Mission, like, especially when I, you know, hear people moving here, tourists here, and then they're like, "Oh, I'm gonna avoid the Mission and the Tenderloin." That's the other place that Fox News loves to say that they're, like, unhoused, heroin addicts is, like, walking around like zombies. They're not. Like, the whole city is very safe.
Venezuelan gangs, I'm sure. It's always Venezuelan gangs.
Oh, my God. Exactly. Yeah. So I love hanging out in those neighborhoods. But in the Mission, recently, what happened is, near 16th of Valencia, there's this market called Rhonda's Market. And this market had a street cat called Kit Kat. And recently, what happened is that Kit Kat was run over by a Waymo.
What's a Waymo?
And I don't know if you are familiar with Waymo, but those are the autonomous vehicles. So they're self-driving vehicles owned by Google. And it's really, I will admit, it's cool. Like, if you ever come here, they're also active in Phoenix. You can order a Waymo, just like you order Uber, and then a car with no driver will pull up and take you wherever you want to go. Right? But the thing about the Waymos is that they're covered in cameras. So they're essentially just spy cars. And on top of that, they don't drive particularly well. They break traffic laws. They do dangerous things, which is really interesting. And I think just culminated in this anecdote of the death of Kit Kat. And what happened was, apparently, this Waymo ran over Kit Kat, ran over the lower half of her body. Apparently, it was super, yeah, it was a super gory scene for the people that saw it, like, she dragged her, this is in the street, and she dragged herself to the sidewalk, and it was, like, vomiting blood, and, like, died a pretty horrendous death. Yeah, it was really, really sad. And, you know, the Waymo company tried to be like, "Oh, um, you know, Google," I should say, it's a Google-owned company. Google was like, "Yeah." So we didn't, you know, the Waymo was driving, and the cat, like, ran, you know, in the middle of the street, and it just, you know, it was a surprise collision. There wasn't time to react. But Mission Local, one of our local newspapers, they do really great work. They're actually an independent newspaper, really awesome. And they dug into it, and they actually found, according to eyewitnesses, that the cat, Kit Kat, was sitting in front of the Waymo for seven seconds before it actually ran her over. And, yeah, so it's really sad, but it's really brought the issue of autonomous vehicles to people's attention. And in the Mission Neighborhood, everyone's really pissed that Kit Kat died the way that she did. And the supervisor of the district, her name is Jackie Fielder, and she's a, she's a Democrat, but she's like a DSA progressive person. So she's, you know, pretty left. And she's really been pushing a resolution for the Board of Supervisors to call on the California Legislature to make it so counties have more input on autonomous vehicles and what they're doing. Because there's a lot of research just showing that the Waymos, and now there's, like, other companies showing up, too. There's, like, this new company called Zoox. And I think Uber is also trying to do autonomous vehicles as well. And there's a lot of research that shows that the more autonomous vehicles you have, the more it takes away from public transit. And on top of that, it adds to a lot of traffic congestion as well. And we're already seeing that in San Francisco, which is already, you know, has terrible traffic congestion. The Waymos are just really adding and accumulating to that problem, you know, so it's.
And it's replacing people's jobs.
Right.
Yes.
That's a big one, too. Yeah.
And not that I want to, you know, consign people to the gig economy, you know, but, like, taxi drivers are still a thing here as well, right? And it's like, they're also being pushed out. So it's, yeah, overall, a really pernicious issue. And we very nearly, last year, there was a proposition on the ballot called Prop L. And it was supposed to be a proposition that would tax Uber, Lyft, and Waymo in order to fund public transit, because our public transit here is facing a massive budget deficit, I think of a couple billion dollars over the next five years. So it was just going to raise taxes, you know, a little bit, just to start to kind of patch up that deficit. But Uber and Lyft put, and Waymo, put in so much money against, you know, anti-Prop L, people on the Uber apps were getting, like, little notifications, being like, "Don't vote for Prop L, or your prices are gonna go up." And it's just really sad, because it was really, really, it actually got over 50%, but there was another proposition that, like, canceled it out. Yeah, so it had a poison pill for it. It was, like, supposed to be this, like, business tax simplification. And it was like, "Oh, yeah, any other proposition that has a, you know, business tax, if this proposition gets more votes than that one, it'll cancel it out." So even though we want.
They are so devious. The scheme is deep. You got to give them that.
It really is. But I will say, for the Prop L campaign, it was really, really admirable to see how they're able to, they're able to involve a lot of people that have never been involved in political organizing before. And it was a really genuine grassroots campaign. They definitely had, like, a little bit of funding from, I think, a couple supervisors and things like that, you know? All in all, like, less than, like, $50,000 to work with, whereas, like, Uber and Lyft had, like, millions of dollars that they were, like, pouring into stuff. So, yeah, it was a really good campaign, a good group of people. And I'm hoping that it goes in the ballot again. But we haven't heard much as to whether or not it will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know. I remember voting on props, and I remember voting on High Speed Rail. Y'all got that yet?
We don't have that anywhere.
2003, 2004?
Oh, I thought it was later. Let me think. I don't remember.
What I remember, it was, like, early 2000s. And so they were like, "Oh, yeah, in 20 years, by 2020, right?"
Yeah, we have some, some comments. Louis Gordon's here. Hi, Louis. I'm assuming you know this person, Zeke Smith. Hey, Vali Elza.
Solidarity Now, very well. We may be talking about Solidarity Now very soon.
Honestly, y'all should definitely interview Zeke. I think Zeke is a really awesome organizer with a lot of really great ideas. He is, he works in tech, and he is also a DJ.
Oh, there we go. Now we're talking.
He has a lot of really great ideas for the Green Party. So you guys should definitely have him on to kind of, like, you know, maybe, like, present some of his ideas and see what y'all think. But I think he's been a really good, a really good, like, comrade to have with the Green Party, but also, like, developing Solidarity Now, which has been really exciting.
Yeah, talk about Solidarity Now. I want to hear about it.
Yeah, so Solidarity Now started off as sort of, we kind of broke off a group of us from Worker Strike Back, which, if you remember, was my previous, one of my previous affiliations in the last livestream. And there are a couple reasons for that. And I think we may, we might go public with some of the things. A lot of it, I think, was just internal. We want to keep it that way, just so it's not, you know, super contentious. But what I will say is that I think we just disagreed with some of the focuses of the organizing. Worker Strike Back has sort of just collapsed into Shama Swann's congressional campaign.
Right, right.
And, you know, not that we don't think Shama would be great in Congress. We just didn't really feel like it responded to the needs of the moment. We wanted to focus more on organized labor and more grassroots organizing, so people aren't so focused on the ballot box as the only means of political change. It's strange, because, you know, Shama resigned from Seattle City Council, because she was like, "Oh, I want to build Worker Strike Back and do that exact thing, develop a revolutionary organization that is able to do those things." But it seems like they got fixated on the congressional seat and kind of backtracked. So I, I don't really know what's going on with that. And, you know, we also just have, like, some strategic disagreements as well. You know, she is trying to define herself as the only anti-war candidate in the race, but there are other anti-war candidates. And, you know, I think something that people don't really consider for some of these, for some of these, like, races, is that, you know, it's not just about you. And if you have the perfectest political positions, you have to consider the political context. What are people thinking about? What are they worried about? You know? Who are the other opponents in your race, right? And I think one of the reasons why Mamdani did so well is because I think he did that analysis really well, right? Like, I don't think he would have done as well if he didn't have, like, the most cartoonishly evil people in Andrew Cuomo, Eric Adams.
Like, he killed grandma.
Literally, he killed grandma and assaulted, like, sexually assaulted, like, 13 different women, right?
Right. No.
Yeah, so I think sometimes you have to, like, make that analysis and determine whether or not it's the best time. And sometimes the answer will be no. And I don't think that limits at all the sort of change in activism we should be doing, but sometimes it's just the conclusion. That's all to say, like, that, I think, is mostly to the core of the disagreement with Worker Strike Back. And so I would say about a dozen of us sort of branched off, and we decided to start a new group called Solidarity Now.
Okay.
And not to get too nerdy, but I think this is the best way to explain it. I'm gonna use a little bit of, like, chemistry terms here. But I think to kind of talk about, like, the way we think about this organization. So there are things called single molecules. So you can think of maybe, like, a sugar molecule or an acid. And you can kind of think of, like, each organization being its own single molecule. And the thing about single molecules is that they can be really powerful, but they are usually very specific and very limited. And in chemical or biochemistry, there are these really nice things called macromolecules, such as proteins. And sometimes proteins can have hundreds of small molecules or hundreds of amino acids. And so what we're trying to do in Solidarity Now is kind of be like the macromolecule. We want to try to get everybody together in, like, a bigger structure and build a sort of united front. Because I think what we've kind of come to discover, especially post our Worker Strike Back breakup, is that, you know, we didn't really like the attitude of, like, there's only one right, right way to organize. We think people have a lot of really legitimate and valid ideas and really great ways of building grassroots power. And, I mean, we're seeing that all over the country, right? Like, you could point to the Mamdani win. You could point to the grassroots resistance of ICE in Chicago, right? There are so many different ways, I think, to respond to the moment that are good and all contribute to the same sort of end. And so why not be accepting of all those things and eventually try to lead to a united front where we can start to enmesh all those efforts together and not be, you know, insistent on things being done, like, our way, or you must be a socialist, or you must be, you must be an anarchist, right? So we're trying to have a little bit more of a tolerant organization that kind of tries to tie those things together.
Kind, almost like an open-door policy, as long as it doesn't go against the things that everybody wants.
Exactly.
I mean, because I was with you all for a while, and then I got super busy. So I'm still, I'm still with you in my heart.
I still consider you a founding member of Solidarity Now.
Oh, I founded another thing. How cool. On accident. I just fell into that one.
Yeah. But, I mean, and I'm sure you can relate and speak on this a little if you want. But I think something we didn't like from some of the experiences we had in the left is, like, a lack of emphasis on relationship building and kind of, like, the human interpersonal connection, right? And instead of, like, kind of trying to force ideology and dogma into everything, we really think that a really powerful way to build is just by, you know, having genuine friendships with people and trying to, like, develop our networks, but in less of, like, kind of a, like, a smarmy way, more of like a genuine way of just, like, building.
Kind of a, you know, I, I mean, I went to Seattle. That's where I met you, and I'm so glad I did. It was a wonderful time. It did feel top-down. And I'm more about more horizontal organizing, you know, grassroots, bottom-up kind of thing. So there is a little bit of a difference in opinion there.
You know, if I could make a little comment, it's just so interesting that I, you know, like, when I judge YouTube channels and stuff, I'm like, "Well, I kind of really go on folks' character. That's what counts." And in a way, you know, I have openly complained about Shama Swann. And I think that maybe what it really is, is I feel like my complaint was, I'll reiterate it again briefly, is that she went on tour with Jill Stein and stood up next to Jill Stein. At the end of every speech, she said, "We need a new party." In Jill Stein's face. Now, as a Green Party person, I have, "Oh, uh-oh, they want to compete." But it's also, wait, here's the relationship part, the character part. Really? You're gonna do that with Jill right there as you guys are working together? It just seems like it's a character flaw to me, right?
Yeah.
That's what hurts.
I think it was definitely tone-deaf, considering that, what, a third, a half of the people at the conference were Greens?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and we didn't come there to take over. We came there to join and see how we could work together, so how we could support them and they could support us. Like, that's how you do things, in my opinion. And I had, you can talk to Scott, I had super high hopes. I'm like, "I want to learn how to, you know, win at city council, and I want to go learn their strategy for, for doing this stuff." I went with, you know, open heart and open mind and left brokenhearted.
I was, I was really, really disappointed by, you know, how people were treated that day. I mean, you know, that, that's what started all this, right? I think it was all of us being like, "This is, this is really messed up," you know?
And to add to my little character thing, Jill Stein, the last time I saw her was on Nick Cruz, RBN, a day or two ago. And what is she doing? Saying how great it is for Shama Swann's campaign. I mean, Jill is still gonna bring the positive, you know? I mean, good for her, good for her. She's way better than me.
Because that kind of win will help the solidarity across the board, just like the Mamdani win helps left issues. Even though I, I don't, I really think the party will break him. I hope not. But I think they will. But if left issues can win, that opens up a door for other left spaces to win as well, which I'm hoping that cracks the door open for us.
I, I would push back just a little, just in the fact that it's a Democratic Party socialist win.
Yeah.
And what that does, unfortunately, I could just see it, is this huge wave of people saying, "See, we can change the Democratic Party," and then it's gonna be another 10 years of a waste of their time.
You're so right on that, Scott. And I think, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, 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 you're right. No, 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 I'm this about, I'm just so disappointed that I'm witnessing that happen again. Two Bernies, and they're gonna do it again.
Two AOCs, right? And I think, something that I find really encouraging, though, is that I think a lot less people are drinking the Kool-Aid, at least on the left this time. Like, I think a lot of us were really like mesmerized by Bernie. We were like, "Oh, like, we can really do this." Right now, I mean, I was too, right? It was a different time. And I think, you know, learning those lessons have been really important for the left. And so we've been able to, I think, now correctly say, "Hey, like, this is controlled opposition, right? He is just going to, you know, he, the DSA, which originally started as DSOC, which was what, the Democratic Organizing Committee. Essentially, it was socialists that were looking to reform the Democratic Party. They like to cut that part out of their history, because they tried to pretend that they're a little bit more independent. But originally, it started as a committee dedicated to reforming the Democratic Party. And it's very obvious, and, you know, everything that they push, right? It's always the Democratic Party. I know, I don't know if you heard, Edie, but at the 2025 DSA convention, someone was trying to, or a group of people was trying to push an amendment to commit to making their 2028 presidential candidate third party, and it failed. Right? Because they don't really want to think about, yeah, it failed. And so I think it just really shows how the DSA, especially the upper leadership, I think, at the bottom, they're definitely a lot more radical at the bottom. And it's trickling up, but it's a slow process. But especially at the top, they're still extremely, like, chained to the hip with the Democratic Party.
And so many organizations are. So, so my, my, I mean, just like Indivisible. You know, the No Kings and all that. I went to try to, to try to tell them about Green Party. I went, I had a frog costume, and I walk up, and I'm like, "Hi, I'm Edie Yarnrell. I'm running for Lieutenant Governor, and it ain't easy being green." So it gets him to smile a little bit, maybe chuckle, and then I can talk to them, you know? Because it's not easy being green. Thank you, Kermit.
So is it. And I'm so glad you did that. It's actually something my wife has suggested more than once. And she's like, because, you know, we have this, like, little inside joke. She used to identify as libertarian. And it's funny, because the San Francisco Libertarian Party, I learned about them a little bit. The only thing they care about is making public nudity legal. And so it's just kind of like a bunch of, like, old white guys who like to really be naked.
I did have a comment from, from A. Jones, "Claim not unfounded, the DNC body count from Barack Obama to AOC."
Right.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Sorry, we were having fun. That was pretty serious.
Oh, yeah, but I'm just joking about the libertarians, essentially, because one thing I will say is that their branding is on point. They have a cute little, I don't know if you've seen the logo, but it's a little hedgehog. So it's really cute. And I think something that she brought up that I've kind of been chewing on is, like, I think the Green Party needs a cute little animal. Like, we need a cute little. And you mentioned the frog, and that's something that we have been thinking about. So, you know, something, something for the, maybe the end.
I mean, they're, they're, you know, people are like, "Ooh, I don't know, it's a frog, but they're so cute." And, you know, they serve a purpose, and they, they get rid of all the mosquitoes, and, you know.
And they can be extremely poisonous.
Oh, wow. There you go.
I like, I really want one, want the frog to be like one of those small, like, exotic, like, rainforest frogs.
Oh, yeah, those are cool. Those are really cool.
Yeah, but that would be, that wouldn't go with the green thing. So here, living in Southern Illinois, we have tree frogs that are so small, you can't even hardly see them. I mean, they're super tiny. But in the spring, oh, my gosh, it's just beautiful, just to go outside and listen to them in the trees.
Yeah.
You have them in Chicago as well?
We don't have frogs. No, we certainly have noises in the trees. We have the cicadas, and we have the Venezuelan gangs in the trees.
It's the Ice Agents, yeah.
No, I just went to a protest in Chicago. It's a new, new protest group, and they were protesting, you know, are, are, you know, about to invade Venezuela. So we were protesting there. But it just, it threw me back to when, you know, forever, they'd been talking about these Venezuelan gangs, and it never made sense to me, "Why, why are they picking on that one?" Now I get it. Every, every war propaganda starts way in advance.
Yeah, yeah. And a lot of people are comparing the sort of manufacturing consent phase to, apparently, the same thing that they did to justify the Iraq invasion, like, 20 years ago. Like, it's the exact same playbook, you know, regurgitating things like, "Yeah, you know, we need to place the opposition for stability." Like, I don't know if either of you heard about their 100-hour plan to install their opposition leaders. Yeah, they're very open about essentially the coup that they want to sponsor. And I think, I think, was it Breaking Points? I think they did a really good, it was Crystal and Sager did a really good segment on, like, sort of following the money behind the attempt for the US to do a coup in Venezuela, and it was really interesting.
And how they tried to bribe the pilot of one of his planes to. Yeah, and he wouldn't do it. And so then they tried to threaten his children. And so, yeah, they were trying to, oh, yeah, they're, they're doing everything that they possibly can to get Maduro. Yeah. I mean, and it is. I mean, and it is, is really corrupt is giving the peace prize to the person they want to install after the violent coup. That's who they give the peace prize to, the Nobel. It just shows you all the institutions, how they all work together and how they are all so corrupt. I swear.
I mean, Barack Obama got the peace prize after what he did to Libya, you know? I mean, it's, yeah, yeah.
Do they not have a dictionary?
Well, Pulitzer Prize went to the New York Times after they had exposed the mass rape hoax of, you know, October 7th. After they exposed the whole thing, they still gave him the Pulitzer Peace.
The awards are meaningless.
Yeah, they are completely, completely meaningless.
It should be a mark of shame now.
A little bit, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's funny because I know Trump is angling and he's been angling for a long time for a Nobel Peace Prize. But it's funny, right? Cause even though, and I think it shows kind of the interesting situation that we're in, right? Because it's like the ruling class is definitely fighting against itself. You know, you have the like Leo, Leo, Leo neoliberal like elites that are fighting against, you know, the, the Trumpians. They think they're just openly like neo fascist. And they're fighting against each other and like the neoliberals still have a control of a lot of institutions, not all of them, and it's quickly changing. But they don't like the Trumpians. So even though they're willing to like give prizes to other war criminals, they're like, not Trump. It kind of reminds me, uh, cause I was born and raised in Las Vegas, Nevada. And it's really interesting because Trump, I think has always kind of experienced, like, he kind of reminds me as like of what, as one of those kids that like no one really likes and no one wants to hang out with. And like, he so desperately wants to be cool, like wants to be part of it, but he can just never really get into it. Because, uh, he, I remember when the Trump Hotel, I think was, was I around when it was constructed? But I remember it was a big thing, you know, about him not being able to get a gambling license essentially. Because if you go to Las Vegas Strip, the Trump Hotel is there, but there's no place to gamble. Because apparently Steve Wynn and other billionaires, uh, wanted to make sure that he didn't get a gambling license. So he could have this motel, but he wasn't allowed to have a casino. They didn't want to make that much money. And so this is really interesting seeing him rise in national politics because I always knew him as a loser who couldn't get a casino on the strip. He's good enough for Atlantic City, but not good enough for Vegas.
Well, yeah. And, and he bankrupts casinos. So what does that tell you?
And he bankrupts all of the companies he starts too. So yeah, no, he's famous for failure.
And he's trying to bankrupt us, I think.
Yeah, right.
Or break us or something. Yeah.
Well, it's a revenge presidency. There's no doubt. It's.
And he said it was. I mean, you know, a lot of people were like, oh, I didn't know he was really going to do that. I'm like, do you not know your history? I mean, that Hitler said what he was going to do, not saying he is Hitler, not saying he's better or worse, just leave that alone. But he did say what he was going to do and then he didn't. So you gotta believe them when they tell you who they are.
Yeah.
And it's, so, cause, oh, I'm sorry, Edie, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, and, and you know, uh, the couple of good things they do does not outweigh all the bad. You know, Hitler made the trains run on time and he built the Audubon. Still not good enough. Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, I will say though, I am sympathetic to, and I, I think this is so, something that definitely like irritates some greens and leftists. But I am sympathetic to a lot of Trump voters because I really don't think most of them are racist or sexist or anything like that. I just think they have grown so anti-establishment that they are looking for anything, you know, to just mix things up. And you know, exactly what you were saying, Edie, like they're like, oh, well, I didn't know who's actually going to do that. And I think it's just because, you know, they have been told by politicians for decades that things are going to change and that they are going to do this and that they are going to do that. But they never do it, right? So I think people genuinely were surprised by the, by the fact that there was a politician who actually did what he said he was going to do. Because they're used to not, that, that not being the case, right? So I, I'm, I'm weirdly sympathetic in a way.
I am, and I still have some hope for them because I think he's becoming, I mean, he's at like 37% in his first year, which is almost unheard of. Um, that means his own voters are leaving. So I think the, I think his voters are the ICE agents. I think that's who he's hiring.
That's, yeah.
Did you vote for me? Okay.
I'll give you a $50,000 bonus if you vote for me.
Well, no, it's funny, right?
In reverse.
Cause it's interesting because I think even the people, you know, that were like very, uh, anti-immigration, you know, being faced with the reality of seeing what it looks like, seeing what it looks like for ICE to raid schools, raid daycares, graduation ceremonies, right? They, I think people being faced with the reality versus the vague concept that illegal immigrants shouldn't be here. You know, it's causing a lot of cognitive dissonance and people are not liking what they're seeing. And I think that's a good thing, right? Like they, they should not like what they're seeing when they're seeing in real life. But I think it makes sense to me, you know, the average American, the average person, you know, like we have so many like, uh, incoherences, like inconsistencies with our political ideology, right? Like we're rarely consistent in everything. And I think that's especially true for Americans of how deeply they've been propagandized. And so it totally makes sense to me that they think they're for something, but then they see it happening and they're like, oh shit, I didn't think it would be like that. Or, you know, a lot of the stories of like Trump voters and then themselves getting dragged out by ICE, right? I don't know if you've seen those, but like.
Status Quo interviewed somebody that, um, came and kidnapped his brother.
Yeah.
You know, well, well, I'm not for criminals, but my brother's not a criminal. I don't know why they got him. Like he looked confused. He just like couldn't, he was trying, you could see him in real time, just trying to like, I don't get it. That, that's not okay. And it's, it's not so much that they were going to help solve, or, you know, if, if you call it an immigration problem, it's that they were going to do it illegally. And just like anybody they want, do whatever they want. I mean, they're, they're felons at this point because they're assaulting people left and right. That's a felony.
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was an ICE agent that shot a woman and then took the ICE car and, and escaped to Maine. I think they're trying to get him back.
Oh my God. I know. Did you, did you all see that story? One of my comrades in Solidarity Now shared it, the one about the woman, this may have been in Illinois, I'm not sure. About the woman who was like driving and then there was like an active, like, you know, ICE raid happening and there was a crowd. And then ICE agents were trying to drive away. So they crashed into her car as she was driving. And then they proceeded to get out, point their weapons at her, drag her out of her car by her legs. No declaration that she was under arrest, no warrant, no nothing. And then she was held in Comunautado for hours before she was released. And she's a US citizen.
Yeah, right.
And she had just had kidney surgery.
Oh.
And, and they, and they leaned on her and, and she, she, she got injured from what happened is what I understand. Yeah. She just got out of surgery and she's a paralegal.
Now, the horror stories are just endless every single day. It's really frightening. I mean, it's, it, it feels like Nazi Germany in Rogers Park, Chicago. That's for sure. It just.
American Gestapo.
I mean, people are terrorized, absolutely terrorized.
Yeah. I, I just wondered what other countries think about us. Like why we can't, I mean, they're like, oh, you guys, we knew this was going to happen.
It's kind of interesting and this is something I've been meaning to do. So, you know, I'm, I'm Latina, but I don't speak Spanish super well. I'm trying to fix that because I think it's really important for organizing in the United States to speak Spanish. And, uh, I've been really interested to dig into more like Latin American coverage and how they're covering the ICE raids. Because we actually have a comrade in Solidarity Now who lives in London. And he was surprised to find that there didn't seem to be a whole lot of emphasis in the reporting in the UK on the ICE raids. Um, like they didn't talk about it much, but that, that could be unique to the UK because UK is also having many issues around immigration itself. And it's, it's kind of interesting. I think the UK is kind of like a generation, like fast forwarded, right? Like, cause they've already have like a lot of the multicultural integration, but now you're getting this massive backlash. Extremely violent backlash against immigrants to a degree that's kind of unheard of. Um, so yeah, I, I don't know what the international reporting is like, but I'm interested to learn more.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be interesting.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's a difficult time, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but yeah, like kind of circling back to Solidarity Now, I, I think there's like a lot of exciting things that we have going for us. Uh, so, you know, anyone listening, if you're interested, uh, I know Edie and Scott put the link to our Substack, which is the Solidarity Now Collective dot Substack dot com. Um, and we've already got a bunch of, I think, good articles on there. Uh, I recently published an article just going over a lot of the organizing that I've been doing for the National Single Pair Movement. Because I think I'm kind of uniquely situated because I live in San Francisco. Uh, UCSF is a massive medical institution that is attempting to sort of monopolize all the hospitals here. They're attempting to buy everything up and have everything be UCSF. Because the UC at the end of the day really behaves like a private, you know, company.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I have a lot of access to that. My wife is a medical student at UCSF. Um, and they're just, you know, you bump elbows with physicians and nurses here all the time. And especially after the, you know, the healthcare CEO murder, I'm like, why isn't anybody taking the energy, you know, around Luigi Mangione's trials? And like redirecting it to long-term organizing, right? Instead of having it be like the sensational true crime thing. Oh, he's so hot, whatever. You know, like trying to direct it more into systemic change. And people I think starting, are starting to connect the dots, but that is, um, personally what I've been really interested in here. So I have a report talking about all the things I've been doing and like kind of leveraging my wife's connections in medical school. She also started a group and getting medical students involved. Cause I'm kind of like, the thing that I'm sort of envisioning is I'm like, yeah, if we can get medical students around the country to do like an encampment style action and being like, we're not going back to school, we're not doing anything until we get a single pair. I think it would be really, really powerful. So trying to like, you know, encourage the UCSF chapter to get connected with other chapters in California and then across the country. And just really trying to motivate that politically. And I kind of feel like, uh, you know, like the, a lot of labor history involves like a lot of socialists and communists that were in the unions and making the unions more militant. And like, you know, pushing a lot of those organizing practices. I think that made those unions so effective. So I feel like I'm the little socialist in the background doing that. It's like sneaking into the medical school and like doing all this stuff and talking to all the students. And yeah, so it's, it's been really exciting.
Yeah, to, to make it, um, long lasting. Um, you know, I, I don't remember if you knew this about me, but I co-founded March for Medicare for All and we thought that's what we were doing. But we, we basically just wanted to be marches and try to create those organizations in all the cities. But it, it kind of rose and then as things do. Um, and the people that we thought would be with us, I mean, back when I was naive, because that was, that, well, that was still 2021. So I guess I was still a little naive four years ago.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we thought National Nurses United would be like, yeah, let's get them, you know? And we invited every member of Congress and we got one letter from, I think it was Pramila Jayapal.
That makes sense. Yeah. Cause she has the current Medicare for All bill. Yeah, sitting.
And, um, her statement. And, and I think Cori Bush showed up in DC and that was it.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Cori Bush. That's surprising.
But no one else, no AOC, no Bernie.
Yeah. And, and I went to, I helped organize the LA one and, you know, the, the politicians want to come in and take it over. And they were half successful because they made it about Calcare instead of about, you know, Medicare for All nationally. And we're like, well, you know, that's fine. But then we found out about the whole debate, you know, between, um, national and state and all that. And I'm like, I didn't even know this existed. I just want healthcare.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I think that's kind of where I come into, but from what I understand, I think I've been pretty convinced of the national thing. Just because how, how do taxes work since we all put our taxes in a federal pot? From what I understand, trying to bring it back to the states to do stuff is just really difficult or require, from what I understand, like kind of a whole new system of funding. And the federal government can just print as much money as it wants. So like it's, you know, probably like the best, the best source for our healthcare program. Um, yeah, I, I totally know what you mean. Finding out about that debate was like, oh, wow. Okay.
Beats me.
Yeah.
Now I know a little more. Um, and you know, as Butch says, which good luck Bush, go get him. He said, there's enough money in the system already. If you remove the profit motive, we can all have healthcare.
Yeah.
In between what the states fund and what the federal government funds, it's, we're already paying for it. We're just not getting it.
If Cuba does it, we can do it.
Remove the middleman.
Right. Right. Isn't California the fifth largest economy in the world, right? That's the, yeah. So, yeah, they, they could do it. Of all the states, they're probably the one they could.
And the fourth largest in the United States. And guess who's five? Illinois.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I didn't either. Cause the whole state, you know.
Well, you know, my, my, uh, not Green Party endorsed plan for, uh, Illinois, California and New York to unite and form a new country, new Kalanoi.
Yeah. And I think we, we, we kind of played around with that for a minute, just out of curiosity.
Well, I, you know, it does get to those issues. How do you deal with the federal government that is assaulting you? You know, how do you deal with a federal government that is coming and invading you? I mean, it, it, you know, I don't think the secession movement will ever take on, but I love to talk about it. Cause people, people easily think, you know, think in those terms, you know?
Yeah. Cause, um, isn't our economy in Illinois like 1.41 something trillion, is it trillion? Dollars a year? And then I know California is like close to five trillion a year. What's your, your GDP?
Right.
You know? And then you add New York.
And we've got it. We're bigger than the United States.
Be like, oh, we can't give you a loan. Sorry.
You mean that, that United States, that 47 state thing that sits over there? Oh, yeah. Way bigger, way bigger.
Yeah. It's just interesting though, right? Cause I find that especially in California, and I think a lot of that has to do with California kind of being, you know, constantly kind of antagonized by some of the country, right? Decent part of the country. Like there is definitely like a lot of people that are like, yeah, California ought to be on its own. But I guess it's kind of wild to me that a lot of people think, you know, uh, succeeding from the union is like more feasible than getting a national program, right? Like I'm pretty sure the latter is a little more feasible, but I get it because it's like the idea, the idea of the federal government giving in to something that we want is like so foreign to people, right? And this is something I've really been trying to hammer home is that modern day Americans, you know, unless you're like really old, like really old, like to have been around, you know, like protesting in like the sixties, right? And the early seventies, like, and being really like tied into those movements. And sorry, I'm just realizing, I hope I didn't call either of you really old, but what I'm trying to say. I don't think, I don't think I did.
Age is subjective. That's what I say.
Yeah. But the, the point that I'm trying to make, you know, uh, is that there has been so much distance from a meaningful mass movement for the average day person. We don't know what that looks like. We can't even conceive of it. And so what I've been really trying to do is trying to use history to get people to conceive of what that looks like. Because these mass movements didn't require the, uh, participation of the major, majority. It was actually very much a minority, but it was enough people to create momentum to actually put pressure on the government for them to be like, damn, if we don't give them what they want, they are going to burn our shit down, right? And just getting people to really understand what that looks like, why we need to have strong specific demands. And I don't know if this frustrated either of you, but I think something that I found really annoying about the No Kings Day coverage is that so many people were like, yeah. You know, because of its moderate nature and the lack of specific demands, it did well to attract a lot of people. And I'm like, what bullshit is this, right? Like, cause you're, you're just going, you're just saying, oh, we don't like a king. But like, it doesn't stand for anything, you know?
And.
Yeah. And it's like, we, we have to be, you know, I, I think it's less leftist. And I think I may have talked about this a little bit last time, like it's tempting to want to advocate for everything at the same time, you know? But I think for our purposes, especially in the US, and this is something I really want to try proposing to the National Green Party. I think the National Green Party should dial in on maybe just two or three, like active campaigns, if that, maybe less, considering the fact that the Green Party doesn't have a lot of resources. But I think it would very much be to our benefit to focus on one or two policies that we can make, green policies. Like have those things maybe be Medicare for All and maybe an actual anti-AI campaign. Because considering the environmental destruction and the already, you know, they're already displacing workers en masse, right?
Yeah, little automatic cars.
Anti-AI is a really good idea because it's, you know, it's, it would be a new campaign. I think it's a great idea.
No one else I think has really capitalized on it, right? And I'm, I'm just looking at everything that's happening. You know, I think, was it in Mississippi or Tennessee? And of course they're building the data centers in states that are black majority, right? Like just furthering the exploitation and the environmental poisoning that a lot of black people already face via environmental racism, right? They're going into these neighborhoods, they're completely poisoning the air, the water, and then using more electricity in the entire cities, right? We need to be addressing this. We need to be addressing this in the short term. And the thing that I've noticed about a lot of the stop AI people that I've been in contact with is that the thing that they're kind of worried about is like artificial general intelligence, which if either of you are familiar with it, it's essentially.
I just saw it today.
It's like, essentially it's like super intelligence. So like the point when an artificial intelligence becomes smarter than a human, right? And a lot of AI scientists and people like theorizing about it say that once we reach that point, that's what leads to like extinction for humanity, right? Cause then like.
Every science fiction movie ever made.
Yeah. No, but seriously, like a lot of like stop AI people, they're kind of fixated on that.
Oh.
And don't get me wrong, like that, that is a threat and that is something we do have to think about. Because with the development of this new technology, we always have to think, where is this going to end, right? And what impact is it going to have? But the thing that I've noticed that's really lacking in this space is that they're not talking about what's happening right now, right? Like right now, kids are graduating from college with CS and software engineering degrees and they can't find jobs, right? Google is getting rid of most of this middle management. Amazon laid off thousands of workers, right? Like it's, it's already happening. And I feel that what little exists of an anti-AI, uh, movement is not responding to that. They're not, you know, talking to these people, getting them folded in. And I think it would be really, really effective for the Green Party to grow as an organization. And especially with like younger people being displaced from these tech jobs. And also, you know, it'd be nice to have a lot of tech people doing tech stuff for the Green Party. Right? Like if we can fold these people in, I think it would be super, super effective. So personally, that's something that I really want to advocate that the Green Party focuses on because I know we really want to have the whole. Because I know we really want to have the whole kitten caboodle, you know, we don't want to leave anything out. You know, I like to joke as a queer person that the acronym keeps growing every year. It's L G B T Y S, da, 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 right? Like, we don't want to leave anything out. But I think it would really, really benefit us.
It needs to just form a word eventually.
Yeah. Hard to pronounce.
That's what the word queer is for, right? Like, we don't need to be like adding all these acronyms. And I think, uh, kind of in a similar like manner, it would really benefit for us, I think, just to kind of like focus on like one or two things. Not denying that like anything else isn't important, but, you know, just using what little resources we do have towards something more effective instead of trying to spread ourselves thin over all of these issues.
Now, agreeing on those, that's, that's the issue. Yeah, I mean, I mean, because, because it just depends on your perspective, like what you want to focus on. I mean, for me, it's the homelessness crisis and that people can't afford housing. And now, you know, I would like to see more community gardens and mutual aid cuz I feel like that's how we fight back. So I was out supporting that today because um they're they're doing some mutual aid events here. So, you know, that's what I was door knocking about.
But you know, you bring up AI as being one of the main ones, I think. And it also works as green because, you know, our, we had a little campaign, Choose Water over AI. Because it's gonna suck up all our water. So it's by, it is a Green Party issue in its definition. Yep.
Yeah, but I think AI would be really great, you know, in expanding the reputation of the Greens beyond just the environment, right? We're all about labor. We're all about, you know, also like socialist economics, right? Which I know we try to avoid that word to not turn off people.
Apparently, it's not, it's not a problem anymore.
Not anymore, right? And that's a, that's a great thing. Um, yeah. But yeah, I I think that's why, I think AI like kind of wraps everything up very nicely. So I think that's something I really just wanna, again, like try to push for more of like a national focus on it. Because I think we can really distinguish, we can really distinguish ourselves that way.
Yeah, how it affects every little bucket, you know?
I mean, and if we don't, there's research showing that uh, AI is self-aware. Um, so that's actually a really interesting point, and I can talk a little bit more about that in a second.
Joe.
I kind of forgot what I was saying. Oh, I was saying, no, no, it's okay. I was saying that uh I think it would be really good to run candidates in places where these massive AI data centers are propping up. And I think it would just be a really powerful issue. And if the Greens can just be seen as like one of the big supporters behind that, I think it would do really, really well. And, you know, I was also thinking, uh, I think uh th- this is something Zeke actually pointed out. I wonder if he's still watching. But he sent the Solidarity Now comrades sort of a picture of the demographics, uh, an exit poll for the people that voted for M'Donny. And by far, the majority, I think the biggest demographic that he captured was actually black men. And I think black women are right behind. And I think what it shows is just that black communities, I think, are the most open to these leftist progressive policies. They want to leave the Democratic Party. They just don't see another option. So I think especially when I think about these southern states, it's like, you know, sometimes majority or close to majority black populations. I'm like, this is an opportunity here. This is a huge opportunity, right? But we need to be like building those bridges. I've had experiences in the Massachusetts Green Party with like a lot of racism and microaggression, not saying that to everybody, but we've had issues. But I think it also just kind of speaks to the fact that the demogra- main demographic of the Green Party is very white. But what I'm trying to say is that if we can change that and if we can get more into more of these, you know, like black podcast spaces, no, door knocking in these communities, right? Like, I think uh Zeke also mentioned that like DSA Chicago only, like, is it the north side? That's white. And the south side, that's black, right? They only do things on the north side? Like, what the heck? Like, what, what, what the heck are we doing, right? Like, we can't not be in these neighborhoods, talking to these people, right? And I just find that i- across the left, it tends to be like pretty white. And it's like, we can't, we can't ignore that, right? And nor the potential like power there.
And it's not to disparage the people that are there doing the work. It's like, add to it that we're saying, please come.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are trying to do outreach, absolutely. Without it, we try very hard. And I was gonna br- bring it back to the AI, um, and it's very much an issue in northern Illinois, Lake Michigan. They are definitely trying to go after Lake Michigan. So they're building new AI centers.
Oh, my god.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. They're going after Lake Michigan. So it is our issue.
Model conductors facilities were bad. AI is worse.
It's way worse.
Well, and I remember the story a few years back about Nestle just getting free water.
Yeah.
So I said, I like immediately stopped buying bottled water, you know? So, you know, the corpor- corporations are behind the paying of our government is the reason we can't get anything done.
That is it. You know, there was the other comment I want to make is that um also just things have gotten so much in our, you know, the the two old people here have seen it of how it went. Oh, okay, I have by myself seen just how everything has gotten worse. Everything has gotten worse.
The incentivization of everything.
I think that the the po- that the corporate parties are way more corporate than they have ever been. I think the media is way more propagandized than it's ever been. It's almost like one hundred percent now. It's one hundred percent propaganda, one hundred percent corrupt. Even though they, it looks great that they got M'Donny in. I mean, you're already hearing the stories of the big money behind it. And so, you know, get ready, folks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I I did just want to respond to that comment really quick about AI already being self-aware. So I'm not an expert. I'm not an AI scientist. I'm not even a computer scientist. Um, but what I will say is that I have a lot of familiarity with how the AI industry works because a lot, there's a lot of similarities to the biotech and pharmaceuticals industry.
Oh.
And what I will say about both, and especially being in the Bay Area, being close to Silicon Valley, I think I get to see these things really up close. And what I've noticed is that a lot of it is based on kind of bullshit, you know, scamming people. Because it's a classic biotech strategy, right, of promising this new drug or new treatment that's going to revolutionize everything. And like, maybe, you know, one time out of like twenty-five, that's actually true. But most of the time is bullshit. Why? Because the biotech industry or the drug development industry is entirely just a crapshoot for venture capitalists to try to make money. And this is why I'm a really, really big proponent of public drug development because I don't think it should be that way. Because this is what leads to, you know, and a lot of people don't know this, but for scientists in my industry, we are constantly going through massive boom and bust cycles where thousands of people are getting laid off every few years when a company ultimately collapses because it wasn't able to get a drug through trials, it made too many promises, right? So they end up like cheering all of their R and D people. Like, I was not told that being a scientist was going to be this, you know, unstable, but it is. I've been laid off or fired twice in my career already, and I've only been in the industry for three years, right?
Oh, wow.
You know, if I could just give a little personal story, I used to be involved in medical research from the computer programming side of the things. And it was true. It was like, it was called ETOC, Eastern Cooperative Oncology Group. And so that was the government, you know, medical research. So all of our staff was like, they had a good time doing those. They knew it was gonna be, you know, they were gonna look at the research and have a good analysis. When the pharmaceutical, when we were doing pharmaceutical studies, it was like, oh, god, they want us to give us the data. The data isn't there, but oh, they keep pushing it. You know, it was this fight. They want some good results, even though the good results aren't there. And so you're right. I mean, the private side of it is not actual research. It is.
And a lot of times that doesn't, our government funds things and and does the R and D, and then a company gets it and makes all the money. I do want to get to some more comments, um, because we're close to the end. I forgot to put this one up. Ajones35, the more candidates, the better. I really wish the Virginia Green Party had someone on the ballot. Maybe that's you.
Yes.
That's, that's what we say here. You don't see it? Go do it yourself.
AJones35.
That's a Green Party saying, for sure.
I call it the DIY party.
The DIY party.
No, I mean, you know, it's a, it's a Green Party struggle now.
It is.
Edie knows of two folks cuz she's involved. And and Jill Stein already said this in public, that we got two candidates coming that I think are gonna help us. But it is true that um we, we need folks to run. And I know it's a weird ask. It's a weird ask, but folks, you can do it. You could do it. You absolutely could, can run.
And just, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, one of the reasons why um I think Green Party is is a little older is because people that are retired join it to try to push it. Like, I did my work, okay? Like, now I can concentrate on this and just put everything into it. And a lot of times, people burn out.
And another thing I should say, and that's why a lot of times you will see older folks running in the Green Party because they can, because they're retired. I, I have been working to get people to run in the Illinois Green Party for a whole year for the twenty twenty-six election. Ninety-five percent of the people that say yes and then back out is because of their job. Their job won't let them. It just happened to Robert Smith in Texas. He's a professor. They, they said, nope, you're not doing it. He was running for Senate in Texas. And they made him drop out. So it's just, it's really difficult. It's really difficult. But if you are a person that is able to, please, please, run for office and contact your state party or, you know. But um, yeah, it's, it's really important that we get folks running.
Last, last comment, Mr. Joe Harrington, which he is running for US Senate.
Yes, he is on US. Yes, Illinois. Yay, Joe.
Yay, Joe. Things fall apart. Uh, the center will not hold. Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Yep.
Things are falling apart, Joe. Yeah, they definitely are.
That's why you can't have center power. You have to have, everybody have to give it to everyone. People power.
Well, certainly, yeah, really, instead of corporate power, that's what we have. We have corporate power right now. So we got people power instead. Yep.
Well, it is eight o'clock on the dot. Wow, I don't believe, it didn't seem like an hour yet, did it?
No, it didn't feel like that at all.
Yeah, so if you wanted to stick on after a little bit, chat for five minutes, that's cool. But um we will see everyone else Saturday at noon for News of the Week, and Scott wants to tell you something.
Just please subscribe. We're really close to six hundred. So that's our new goal, is six hundred. We're really close. So folks, if you haven't subscribed, please do that. We would love that. Uh, we'd really appreciate that on YouTube, the YouTube subscriptions.
And if you know anybody in Virginia that wants to run for office, um, let A. Jones know. Ajones35. All right. See you, guys. Thanks so much.
Bye, everybody.
Peace.